It's carried.
We're gonna let, really quick, we're gonna let Rob Crispin have a chat, if he wants to speak. We would certainly allow that. Sorry, we had to do it, we had to do an executive session, but I knew you came for a reason, so we're gonna give you a chance to... Yes. When it makes a red light come on?
There we go, I just want to say thank you, and I'm not sure what was discussed in the previous session. I can tell you what I've read, and that's based on the resolution that you may have seen in front of you. I'm very concerned of how that could affect my office and maybe other offices. My primary concern is my first deputy, who has wide, deep, and heavily required requirements, maybe stepped over in case of this resolution going through. I think it possibly may cause more problems than it solves. Again, I don't know what you guys discussed previously. I think the other thing it might do is there are certain directors out there, that if we start moving deputies up into these higher echelons, we're gonna have what we used to call income compression. I think there's some problems that need to be discussed. I think there may be a bigger picture you need to take a look at, but my primary concern is parochial, and that's my office and what's fair. So, if you have any questions for me, feel free, but that's my point of view.
Questions for Rob? Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it. Mr. Darrell?
So, we have some people that'll be on the projector, and they'll have the presentation, we have the presentation also.
We have the presentation also in paper copy for you, so if we can just take a moment to get that hooked up, then we can get rolling. If anybody needs 2.2 minutes.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes, we can now.
We can't hear them, though.
We can't hear you.
Oh.
She's working on it. So, once we get the sound sorted out on the screen, we can progress. The...
If all fails, you get the B team. The A team's on the screen.
So, I'm just gonna do my preface, if that's alright with you, Chair. Okay, so, back in 2019, we had a trails task force for about a year. There was a group of half legislators and half other folks involved in that. As part of that project effort, we had brought together a lot of information about what assets we had. That was compiled, and as part of the recommendations, we realized that we really had no plan for our trail system in this county. The last trail plan I had found was vintage 1974. It was not very thick, and it was that that brought us to, a couple of years ago, Stacy Beardsley, Deputy Director of Planning, worked on creating a grant application to Appalachian Regional Commission, and that was successful in being funded. That allowed us to go out and hire a consultant, Larson Design Group, LDG, and they had been working this year on this project with the intent to, that this project would be completed this year. So, we are near the end already. So, with that, part of the, this is, we've done a lot of stakeholder outreach, and Larson folks that are on the screen, and they can introduce themselves when we get to that They've done the vast majority of the work. Stacy's been the lead project manager on this, and we'll have the final document probably in December. You all should have received the email with the link, and should have already been able to see the scope, you know, what we ended up with. That's probably at 95% done, and we're just looking for a few more fixes on a few minor things at this point, but we're getting right to it. With that, I'm gonna turn it over, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself and introduce the folks on the screen, and hopefully they can put up their presentation to follow along.
They should. Can you guys hear us? Nod your heads if you can hear us. Can you? Can we hear you guys? No.
Is that not working still?
It said, they think we're muted. They could hear us. There you go, right there. Now you can hear us. No? Alright. Like I said, you might get stuck with the B team. They should be able to share their screen, though, hopefully. If not, I can.
Speak, if you're on the Zoom.
Trying to get him.
Can you hear us at all?
Now we can. Can you guys hear them? He may, Pat, can you talk, Pat?
Patrick, you're muted, if you could unmute yourself and speak.
Are you able to hear us?
Thank you.
Can you hear us? They can't hear us, but that's okay. No, that's okay. I will take it over. They have the presentation up, so you guys all have it luckily in front of you, so we will take it from there, technology. So, welcome, thank you for having us. I'm Kristen Van Horn, I am the Director of Planning for Larson Design Group, and I have with me on my team, who unfortunately can't hear us, so they won't be able to introduce themselves. The project manager for this project was Ashley McKnight, as well as Patrick Dougherty, who is our Senior Planner, and really head up a lot of the project itself. Can you guys hear us now? Alright. Well, we're gonna run through this, don't worry about the presentation up there. We're gonna go to the agenda. Just quickly run through the background on the project, the analysis of what we learned, as well as the action plan, and the action plan is really where we're gonna spend the majority of our time. Everything else, you know a lot of this background on your county, you don't need us to tell you what that is, so we'll really focus in on the action plan and how to move the project forward. We kind of went through the introductions on the next slide, so the only person I didn't introduce and isn't on the call is Michael Bay, he is our Parks and Rec Planner. We also really want to thank Stacy and Kier for their effort in supporting this project and helping us get it completed to this point. So, looking at the project schedule, we've been working on this project for about a year, so we're coming to an end. Hopefully, everyone saw the draft report. Looks good so far, great, glad to hear it. So, that's where we are, we're making this presentation. Any comments that we receive from all of you, we will incorporate into that draft plan, and then send over for official adoption in December. So, the purpose of the plan really was to establish a vision, engage the community members, what do they want to see, how will they use these trails, improve connectivity, right? You guys have a ton of trails in your county, but they're not necessarily connected to one of each other. Guide future development, and then support new funding. We know that trails are not self-sustaining, and they take money to maintain, and how do we look at that? Who helps? Where are the groups available for that type of work? So, moving through the analysis, this slide is just a touch on the demographics, and the key demographics, that we used to just provide some general context to the county. As you're aware, you guys are a rural community with a bunch of, you know, with your towns scattered really throughout the county, not unsimilar to any of the surrounding counties in the area. So, knowing that, we tried to make sure that as we were looking at the plans and the trails, we took into consideration where the people are. No need to put a trail where there's no one that's gonna use it, right? That wouldn't be a great investment. So, using those demographics, we really just took that into consideration. Moving on to the next, what we learned. This is just a snapshot of what existing assets are here. We have the Finger Lakes Trail, we have state bike routes, there's trails within the D.C. land, we have our roads, our hiking, mountain biking, there's equestrian trails, the cross-country skiing trails, the snowmobile trails. So, a lot of trails that are kind of dispersed throughout the county, and a lot of those assets are owned, operated, and backed by other agencies in the county, which makes it tricky. You don't have a direct control over them. So, what can the county do to connect these different assets, and how can the county work with these agencies to assist in building off previous and future efforts, right? We really think that this is, should be a collaborative process with all of those other agencies and stakeholders, to be able to enhance those existing assets. You know, we're not really looking at this as the county's gonna take over all these trails and be responsible for it. It's really how do you collaborate and make this happen? Moving to the next slide. So, what we learned is that you guys are rich in natural assets. There are tons of opportunities here, and we really wanted to focus this effort on how do we connect all of those natural assets and resources that you have, so your county forests, your wildlife management areas, your state forests. Is there a way to get people throughout all of those, as well as supporting the communities that are touched by all of those assets? Moving to this one, just touching on our community outreach. We did a community survey, we held focus groups and interviews, Michael came and attended the county fair, and collected information during all of those things, and we just recently closed the plan for comment. So, it's been open and available for the public to comment, and we're working to bring those comments into the plan, and we received comments from local stakeholders, regional user groups, as well as some of the state organizations involved in some of these trails. So, we feel really confident that we've been able to get a good input into the project. Any questions on that part of it? I know stakeholder engagement can be really important. So, moving into those what we heard and those key priorities, we know that there's a lot of gravel routes out there, so utilizing those existing gravel routes as multi-use trails provides a cost-effective and low-impact connections that can really boost the recreation, tourism, and community mobility. Focusing on those multi-use trails, when we have single-use trails, it really limits who can be using the trails, and it oftentimes ends up creating a lot of conflict, because maybe I don't know that I shouldn't be on that trail with my mountain bike, because it's a walking-only trail, and it just ends up not creating good-used trails, so we want to make sure that they're multi-used. We want to really touch in on the trail towns. Several of the communities within Allegheny are trail towns. How do we make the most of that? How do we encourage that branding to really come to life and connect those things? And then improving the existing routes and amenities, the trailheads, making sure that everyone can really use these trails. Are there any ADA-compliant trails, so that everyone can get out there and enjoy the beautiful natural resources of Allegheny County? And then just educating people on how to use the trails, safety around the trails, stewardship, right? Because our people are really the ones that are gonna help us maintain these trails and sustain these trails, and making sure they're picking up behind themselves, and if they see a problem, bringing it to light. Overall, what we really heard and focused on was that connectivity, enhancing the existing assets, and that safety and education as being our real key themes of our plan. So, just a summary of our findings and opportunities, and I don't want to read all of this to you, but happy to answer any questions if I can, but really, we wanted to look and prioritize where right-ofways have already been acquired, because it's gonna end up at times costing additional resources to acquire right-ofways, but if the trails already have all of the right-ofways sort of in place, they're easier to kind of get moving, so we really prioritized improving those existing assets first. Any questions so far? I'm talking fast, I know.
It doesn't look like any of the trails go through county property, but I see it goes through a lot of state property. So, as you're walking a trail, is it, if you get off the trail, you might be on somebody's private property, how do you know that it's, and how far off the trail can you go? Is there a right-ofway?
That's where the right-ofways come in typically. I don't know the exact distance of your right-ofway. Typically, it's 10 to 15 feet, and that's been acquired by whoever put the state trail in. So, your Genesee Valley, Greenway, those right-ofways have already been established and are sort of there. Typically, as you're on those trails, it's pretty clear where the right-ofway is, you know, there's usually some vegetation there.
So, basically, you stay on the trail until you get to a place that's marked, if you wanted to get off it. Say, are the state forests marked, so you know when you're coming into a state forest?
A lot of them are marked, and part of what we'll get to a little later in the implementation is really that signage to let people know where they're arriving, where they're going, so that they can stay on the trail and be on the right path, right? Because we don't want them to get lost wandering about, so that signage will come in. But there, it's a combination, some are really well-marked and some are not as well-marked.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, well, moving into the good part, the implementation plan, of how do we kind of make this all happen? So, from our implementation plan, we set goals, objectives, we created a capital development program, and then established some trail design standards, just to help provide some best practices and that framework for what these trails could look like as you're expanding that network. So, looking at our prioritization and the projects, we, as I said, the highest priority was given to the Genesee Valley Greenway, sort of existing right-ofway, because it's already largely secured. So, these projects can make, be really high impact, but really minor in terms of their investment at times. It's low effort to grade, grub, add some crushed gravel, and some safety things, varying, marking out the trailheads a little bit better, creating maybe some off-road parking, just to get people in a safe place to get off and get on the trail. So, those are low effort, and we really took a look at how can we get those things done? All the way up to the things that are gonna take a real lot of effort and a lot of coordination across many agencies. We wanted to create that north-south cross-country trail, and then utilize the WAG trail as a medium, because a lot of the right-ofways on that are not in place at this time. So, kind of looking at it from that perspective.
On the WAG trail itself, now that's an old railroad bed, I would assume that there was a right-ofway at some time for the railroad.
There was.
And they don't, can't just, just fill that right-ofway?
Parts of it are there still, parts have, you know, been sold off, as they sold off parts of that old rail, so it's acquiring that right-ofway back. The right-ofway likely exists in terms of a deed, you know, what they could have been, it's just acquiring them back into place.
At one time, the railroad had the right-ofway, the whole thing.
Correct, yep.
And they sold off, that railroad actually sold off parts of that?
That's my understanding. That's pretty common in a lot of places, where the railroad no longer was going through, and they had no use for the land there. They just typically ended up selling it to the adjacent property owner a lot of times, or just sold off parts of that rail bed. So, it's a great path, because in most cases, it hasn't grown up, and it's still there. It's just a matter of reacquiring a lot of those right-ofways that the railroad passed off.
I think the WAG trail is pretty much clear up through there. There's property owners, you know, concerned about it, but I don't think there's any property owners that's actually got that trail stopped. Kier, do you?
The part that she's talking about is to extend it from Wellsville north to Belfast, that stretch.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
Where that, that was all, and we've been trying to come up with a new name. I have a nomination, other than WAG trail, from one of your former legislators, you can imagine, and, so we might change that name out in honor of Bill. The, but the connection, there is no official connection, one basically from the high school to Belfast. It became, it's the Buffalo something. Yeah, so, just to clarify that.
It's on their map in a couple of slides. I got ahead of myself talking about our priorities, but there is a slide about just that particular trail coming up. This is why you guys got the B team, unfortunately, I apologize. So, moving into the projects, you all have a big version of this map on your, on your slide there. We really focused, as I said at the beginning, where the people were, you know, so in that south portion of the county, you won't see a lot of projects, because it's not nearly as populated as the other parts of the county. So, really recognizing that we wanted to make sure we were making feasible recommendations, as well as fiscally responsible recommendations, you know, not putting a lot of investment where likely there won't be a lot of use. So, moving into those projects, we'll start with the Genesee Valley Greenway enhancements. This was sort of the easiest way to create a crushed gravel path and that cross-country trail. As I noted, the right-ofway is owned and already utilized, this is well-utilized to varying degrees, so it's kind of that low-hanging fruit, but a big-impact win to say, hey, look at what we're doing here. And you're, we can really encourage everyone to collaborate, because there's existing organizations between the state park and then the Friends of the Genesee Valley Greenway, that those partnerships can help lessen that load of who's gonna work on these improvements. By going together, you can make a bigger impact, you know, cumulative impact than just sort of going alone, so we really encourage that. And those improvements really focus on accessibility, erosion control, flood mitigation, connecting those trail towns in the populated areas, and it's really, like I said, intended to collaborate with the state and not overhaul their efforts or their plans, really letting their plans for it take the precedence, and being the supporter behind it and encouraging the state to continue making a lot of those improvements. and being the supporter behind it and encouraging the state to continue making a lot of those improvements and that investment in. And then really that first key step being that flood mitigation and erosion control, and then acquiring any easements that might throw a hurdle in having just a seamless path. So those last couple of spots where maybe it isn't a great straight point, you might have to go around. So really connecting that. Any questions on that one? All right. Moving to the WAG, maybe future different name?
WAG Gap Trail.
WAG Gap Trail. So this one, as Kira mentioned, is three parts, and it's really the main trail extending from Wellsville north to Belfast. Is that correct? And then sort of two parts of an extension connectors that northeast, southwest from Wellsville to Almond, and then east-west along the interstate from Cuba to Belvedere. So really expanding that network more than it is today. All right. Moving to the next page. These are our real focus on those last mile connections and getting from an existing or future asset into the towns themselves, right? Because trails have a real ability to bring people into communities. And you've got some beautiful, small little towns and villages here that can really take advantage of just having some people coming through and seeing them and saying, hey, I want to go back to that little town that we walked through and spend some time there. So there's that economic part of bringing people on the trail to just see your communities along the way. All right. So then the local enhancements. Once people are in town, these projects within this section really allow them to walk around the town more easily and safely. So it focuses on renovating existing sidewalks, building new sidewalks, some signage, and really building off that trail town branding that a few of the towns already have. And, you know, supporting other communities and getting that trail town designation. All right. The last chunk of projects are the gravel road connectors. And this, this initial, what these are, is really intended to be a pilot project for the gravel road enhancements. This one was chosen because it goes through several protected lands, past some existing trails, and is fairly straight, which is helpful. So that's where this one focuses. And in the plan that you all received, you'll find there's a lot of details about each of these. We just really wanted to keep it pretty high level for, for this forum so that you weren't here all day listening to me talk about hundreds of projects individually on these, on these efforts. So on this page, this is just a quick view of what every project has. This is the capital development program, so it really goes through the project description, who the project partners or stakeholders could be, the estimated costs, the context of just how long of a trail this segment will be, or what the impact of this part will be. And then some example imagery as well as a project map so you can see right where that project is located. And that is for every project. So in that prior to where we were saying, you know, there's 24 miles of last connection, there's a bunch of projects that create that 24 miles. So then moving into the summary, the first set of projects, that's where you can start to see these project numbers and how many there are, are really high priority projects. They really get that Genesee Valley Greenway up and running as a premier trail within the county. So like I said, they have a significant cost to them, but make big impact of starting this really great county network. And then moving into the medium priority projects, these focus on the trail towns for that last mile and local connections while continuing to acquire the land for the WAG Gap Trails. And then lastly, we have the low priority projects. And these are a lot of countywide programs that can be done earlier, and they fall here because of their sort of, sort of lower impact score versus level of effort. So it's a really big number at the bottom of this page. But if you take it in small pieces, it can be doable and it really gives you that action plan to be able to start working together and collaboratively with other stakeholders and organizations to say, how do we start tackling this? Maybe one project at a time. Maybe there's something happening and you can grab five of them at once. But it really allows you to take it a piece by piece by piece, right? First, sort of saying, where will we find all this money to be able to do this? We know that's not realistic, but we want to give a plan that allows you to over time get there. So then we also have just all the trailheads on this map that we're recommending. And a lot of the projects are more or less just amenities and helping bring context to those trailheads and awareness that they're there.
So these figures you're giving us here, they don't include the annual upkeep and maintenance, is that correct?
They do not, no.
No. So this is just to get them up and going?
Yeah. And there are varying programs. Do you guys manage the snowmobile program for York County? Someone else. So right, there's the snowmobile grants that are out there that the snowmobile clubs will come through and they'll do some trail maintenance. So that's really where if you can take advantage of some of these varying groups that are able to pull down funding, if they maintain the snowmobile trail in the summer months, someone can use that same trail for a hiking trail or a biking trail, right? So it's really being supportive of how do you maintain the trails creatively and having those friends groups and, and organizations like that that are able to bring in small funding to help with that maintenance cost.
Also, with the Finger Lakes Trail, which runs through part of our communities, my community, they use stewardship. The people are volunteers and they are stewards of the trail and they maintain those trails. And it's totally done for free. And I see the stewards, sometimes they're from Rochester and they're down in, you know, Centerville. And sometimes they're local people. So there are options that are volunteer options as well.
I, the Finger Lakes Trail runs through my local community as well, and we see them come through pretty regularly and maintain those, those trails.
Under the Genesee Valley Greenway, all those cost things there, is this stuff they already are planning to do and that's their prices?
Those prices are what we've come up with, but we did coordinate with their projects. I wish that Pat was on the call because Pat's our go-to guy for all cost estimating as well as a lot of those projects. But I can get you an answer to that and would be happy to send you an email this afternoon.
I just know they're already, the bridges, there are five bridges that are missing, they're all coming in supposedly the next summer. And they're already funded and everything else. So are they included in these prices or?
No, the bridges are not.
And then over on your trailheads where you have different things, for picnic benches, kiosks, bike racks, those are all proposed things?
Correct, yep.
Some of them already exist in that quantity. I'm just familiar with the Holden Canyon DIA stuff and the, there's a whole park right next to the Greenway that's got a pavilion and picnic tables and playground, that kind of stuff.
I would say that if, if, there may be situations where there's already a bench there. But can it be enhanced? Are there, is there a need for additional based on the usage, right? Are a bunch of people using this and they could just use a couple more benches or a different informational kiosk? You know, so it's, it's part, partially just somewhat enhancing existing amenities that could already exist in place. That was not part of our initial work? We can, I can have Pat look into, see where it is.
I have a quick question. You talk about gravel roads, maybe seasonal roads or whatever you're looking at. But has anyone ever looked at abandoned roads in these townships? If you take a qualified abandonment road, a road is still a right of way.
I do believe they've looked at all of those, yep.
Okay, because I know there's a lot of them. DOT's got lists of them, so.
Yeah, I, they spent, our team spent a lot of time really digging into what was here in those existing conditions. And I, I sort of skimmed over it knowing that you all are very familiar with it and didn't need me to tell you. But they did, did spend a lot of time looking at where, where we could possibly put these through in the easiest way. So those abandoned roads, you're right, those already are there. So if we could reuse those in a way, they did look at that.
So, good.
I got a question on the abandoned roads there. So is the abandoned roads officially abandoned you're talking about?
There's different terms of abandoned road. There's a total abandonment, which goes back to the landowner. But the easiest way to do it for municipalities and is generally done is a qualified abandonment. So basically, the right of way stays in the town's ownership. Correct me if I'm wrong. I know that Carissa knows a little bit about this. We've discussed this before. But I've had a lot of experience with that. I've abandoned a lot of roads. But if it's qualified abandoned, it's open to the public. So, you know, it can be utilized as such. It may not make some of the landlords happy, but it, it is certainly usable.
So that's where they've gone through the local municipality or whatever the governing agency is, whether it be the state, the county, or the town, village, would be, will they officially abandon the road or no?
Right. It has to be done by resolution by the superintendent to the board. And then it's all filed with, New York State DOT has a complete list of all abandoned roads. So any roads that were on your, your inventory list for your local roads, that makes a difference there. So that all goes through DOT, so it has to be updated. But they have a huge list. Actually, the county's probably got a list of most of them in, in the resolutions. Right?
So this, this level of detail that we're talking now is, is sort of the next phase on a lot of these projects. And those ideas are awesome. And the things like Phil talking about, well, some of these trailheads may exist. Obviously, you don't just go order 42 picnic tables and start going and placing them. You have to go out, do that field, additional field work for each site, check the right of way issues, clear all that up before you go do this next step. But this gets some different ideas that we hadn't really been thinking about, especially in the case of the gravel road usage. That wasn't really on my radar anyway. So this is, this is some of the benefit to get this on the table. And then we can, you know, the things that we can actually achieve, let's go after some of that and knock some of these out. Does that make sense?
Going back to the Kevin, or Mr. La Forge's question, sorry. The trail towns have done some cost analysis, and I think that information is out there. And as a matter of fact, there's a book I have that talks about how the economic development advantages to some of these, specifically these rails to trail towns in other places and the cost benefit. So there is information out there, and I'm on the trail town committee in my town. And we, there, there have been some analysis that they have done. And it comes down from Rochester, so, you know, some of it is different than us. But, you know, little by little, I think Phil's also involved in the Canyon DIA part of that. But they have done more of that kind of analysis.
Basically, that is what I was going to say. There is data out there. There's been data out there for a long time. I remember getting information from the Finger Lakes Trails when we were doing tourism and been involved in trails for quite a while. The data's out there. It is, it is a good investment. I don't think that we are going to be able to look at this plan and say, okay, we have $500,000 or $5 million to spend here. We're going to have to pick and choose. We, we don't have that kind of money. But I like that it's a plan that's put together on how we start moving forward in pieces as we can do it. But there's, there's quite a bit of data out there. And I've always been a supporter that utilizing what resources we have, you know, too, as we still work towards economic development with businesses and manufacturing. We do have great resources that can produce and pull in tourism. Been to other places in the state where they've built these types of initiatives with trails and so forth, and they have quite a few people coming. And it does, gas is part of it, restaurants are part of it. But it's a slow start. It's a slow start, you know, step by step. But there's been data out there for quite a while, so.
Yeah. The, I believe there's a little section in the actual plan where it talks about some of that return on investment, but we did not highlight that in this particular presentation.
Yeah, just for public knowledge, was this study done with grant fund money or Allegheny County money?
This is Appalachian Regional Commission grant.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Question I have be more for Kira. I noticed most of the trails or pretty much all of them except the WAG trail is in northern part of the county where county and state lands are, basically. There's nothing in District Three other than the WAG trail. And the population, I'm sure, in Burt's Hill and Short Track and Black Creek doesn't match Valverne, those areas. So obviously, a lot of this is because of the state lands.
Correct.
It's, it's too bad because, you know, I, I go up to Sunny Hill campsite and there's over 400 sites up there. They're fixed and then plus all the other weekend people. You know, on a Fourth of July Memorial Day, whatever, there's 3,000, 5,000 people up there. And they have no, nothing to use around there other than if they can go out on their side-by-sides. But not everybody wants to go out on a side-by-side. There's no other trails for them to use. Plus, we have the Alma Pond and all that area down there, which is a beautiful area, so.
Do you have snowmobile trails there?
Most of them are going through public or through personal property that they have.
Have an agreement with.
Have agreements, but they get shut off.
So while we tried to collect all the information on what we have and what makes sense for what we have, it doesn't mean that that southwest corner couldn't be looked at. For additional thoughts, the biggest issue down there is that while there were railroads down there, all of those were returned to the landowners. So it's very much like this stretch from Belfast to Wellsville where you're going to have to go out and have somebody do, let's make a deal, and with every single property owner, and figure out a way to reacquire any stretches you want on a railroad or set up new easements on some other path. Each one of those would be its own study and analysis and.
Very costly.
Well, the analysis isn't, but the, and that's what you would want to do is if there is, is, if there's interest in that area, then, you know, we could work on getting, putting together a project to really look at that. But that was, there's nothing existing in that area currently. So we were kind of like, well, we're, we're working with all the. So we were kind of like, well, we're, we're working with all the stakeholders that have something right now. And then we could talk about those other areas.
Kier, didn't we do a study a couple of years ago on, on the, or had, had gotten a grant for people to come in and look at the land assessments and who owned them along?
Yes.
So we have some of that data.
We did that for the Connector Trail.
Yeah.
And so that was a Ralph Wilson funded project. So there are funding sources to do those analyses if there's some energy behind one of these concepts, but there's got to be some local interest in pursuing these things. This is going to be the biggest challenge with, with moving forward on a lot of these projects is the county does not own these properties for the vast majority of them. So we're working with other people that own properties and manage them. And so the state park owns the Tennessee Valley Greenway, DEC owns the Wag Trail, colleges own their trails, so on and so forth. So it's a, we're, we're not in the, necessarily in the lead seat, but we're trying to bring all that information in one location through this project. Yeah, I'll let you finish up your story.
That's okay. I appreciate this conversation. I shared the same seat as Kier in Skyler County for 10 years, so fully understand a lot of this and we have a lot of similarities in Skyler County to you guys. And as we were going through this, I saw some of the challenges, that it's not easy to get from plan to implementation. But the one thing that I think this plan really encourages and I found in my career on the local government side was that collaboration with existing agencies and the state parks in DC can really go a long way, but there oftentimes needs to be a champion. So if the county can be the champion and say, hey, let's get everybody in the same room, talking the same language, things get done a lot faster than if it's just somebody over here talking, saying, all right, I think we can get this going, all right, we'll call this mayor, we'll do this. There needs to be someone championing it. And I really think that that is the goal of this plan, is to allow you all to have the information you need to either say, let's keep moving on this, this is good, the community wants this, or I'm not sure this is the right thing for right now, right? And that's why we did it in a way that you could do parts of the project. It wasn't fund the whole thing at once.
So you have examples, like Skyler County is, is that an example where they did this?
You know what, I couldn't get those guys to pick any of the Skyler County trails. They did not find them to be as beautiful as the ones they picked, but there are some examples in, in the plan, there's a lot of examples in the plan and each project has a little visual of what that could look like that has been pulled from all over the state. But a couple of slides from here, you'll see a couple of examples.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Your cost estimates, are they all self-using prevailing wage?
I believe so, yeah. Actually, I, well, I think they did a 30%. So typically at this level of design, you just do 30% for design and construction that we build into the cost, because there's going to, you're not going to go out and build this for exactly this cost, I can promise you that. It's meant to be an estimate so that when you go after grant funding, you have a general idea of what you need. But it is not to the penny, this is what it's going to cost, because none of these trails have been engineered yet. So when we talk about prevailing wage, that's something that comes much further down the line. So we use a general, and you'll see it in the plan, it's, it's a line that just says, and it might be more, was it 45% for you guys?
I don't.
But it's in the plan, like in the cost estimates in each project, you'll see a line that says designing construction. And that's where it considers.
Two-part question.
Okay.
Like to our presentation, in just the stations, if we add a line prevailing wage general, this is all for the model.
I think it would be depending on who's funding it, right? Typically, depending on the source of the funds, that's who dictates prevailing wage.
So if it's an NGO, who's NGO, this lead agency or some other nonprofit, then prevailing wages would not be involved, is that correct?
If, if the nonprofit is going out with a bunch of volunteers and building something, likely prevailing wage wouldn't be involved because they're volunteering. If that volunteer organization went out and pulled down state park money to do trail maintenance and they were going to pay someone to do that trail maintenance, likely prevailing wage would come in because the source of the funding.
I, I see this trail plan is just, it's for Allegheny County, but it's for all our partners that we're pulling it together. So if it's their trail, maybe they can look at this and say, well, this would work on ours and we support that. It's not all county money going into it, it's getting the grants, it's supporting our partners to do what needs to be done, so it's not just.
Each one does talk about potential funding sources and partners of who should, you know, lead the cause or the charge. Like I said, it's really allowing there to be champions of trail work. I don't, I don't think the plan indicates that the county itself is going to go out and undertake all of these projects. That's not the intent. It's, as Kier said, is to start building that framework for what could be and having that initial guide of where can we make connections, where is it logical, where is it not ideal at the moment? So I have just a couple more slides and it won't take any more of your time, but, and I'll be very quick in them, because I think we've talked about a lot of these. So we just also created some trail guidelines, just some general things around maintenance, best practice when it comes to maintenance standards, some consistency of, you know, how, what the grade of the trail should be, what's comfortable, how wide should they be? So there's some trail guidance built into the plan. It uses a lot of existing standards that are already out there, including the New York State Park standards, the rails to trails standards. So that's all built into the plan as well. Then we created some signage guidance and guidelines, because part of what makes a good trail system is that consistency, that you know you're on the trail, you know you're headed in the right direction, all the signs look the same, information is being portrayed in a way that's very clear and easy to understand. So creating some signage that in itself would require some formal planning and efforts to make sure that that branding is exactly what you all as the county would want your branding to be on all of these trails. But you know, that signage along the trails, at trailheads, at intersections, making sure everyone's moving in the right direction, but you want it to be well-done and easy to understand. Sort of if you're rushing by on a bike, you can still tell that you're on the same trail versus even if you're just walking at your own pace. So then we also looked at several case studies and that's where I said, I didn't pick any case studies from my community, but that's okay. They did, there's several case studies that really lay out ways that some of these ideas have been implemented in other locations and they're easy to, to go locate and talk to them and say, hey, what were your challenges? How did you see that working? And a lot of those are highlighted in, in the plan itself. So the next steps, the immediate next steps for, are sort of, how do you start implementing this? And we just put together a crosswalk for that implementation of, you know, what is the project, what is the cost, you know, acquiring the funding and then the feasibility, right-of-way assessments. And then you get into that design, the physical design of the project and then construction. So we have the, all of this in the plan. I recognize I've taken a lot of your time already, so I don't, I don't want to, I'm happy to answer as many questions as you have, but I also want to be conscious of your time here today.
I just want to say thank you for putting this together and Kier and the planning department for doing this. It's been a long time in the making. We've talked about trying to have and get a trail master plan for a long, long time. So thank you for doing this. I think this is a great start, it gives us something to really look at. And I want to go back to something that you had said earlier and given you some history on this. Several years ago, we had a committee, a trail committee, and we really weren't too successful. And one of the recommendations from that trail committee was you needed one person to champion this. And at the time, we could, we did not come up with that one person to champion this and we kind of fell, fell apart and fell away. And Kier, I think it came back into your area to champion this. But I do agree that to be successful, we need somebody to champion this, a person who's dedicated, a person, a department or an agency who can champion this. Otherwise, it just doesn't get done by a committee.
I just wanted to remind you that, you know, during the, putting this project together, the actual owners of all these trails were consulted and so they're aware of this project. This shouldn't be a surprise to any of them. We, we did a lot of outreach to try to gather as much information as we could. Like any planning effort, there's always going to be a few people to say, well, you didn't call me. And that's just the way that works. Sometimes you can't remember every single person in a county that might have had a thought that you didn't even know existed, so. We appreciate all the people who took time to give the input, because without them, this would have been a very short plan. And so we'll continue to move forward, they're going to wrap it up. You can see in their next steps, this plan is scheduled to be, be a little Christmas present and we should be, we should be good at that point. And then we will have to discuss internally how to take the next steps, so.
If you have any comments and haven't sent them our way yet, please feel free to do that. We're, we'll take those comments and incorporate them in. Our tentative schedule is to spend the next few weeks revising with any of those comments, so we're, we're happy to hear them. If you just want to talk to someone on our team about some process of this, I have my business cards here, but Kier can also get you in touch with Ashley and Pat who dove into this project and really loved working on it and can tell you the ins and outs of every, every part of it that I have not, I failed to bring there to this today. So I apologize that we weren't able to get them on the, on the call as well. But they loved working on this project and they, I know Pat is coming up shortly and can't wait to come and check it out. Any questions?
Any else? All right, thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Does anybody need a five-minute break? Keep going. Okay, we'll keep going.
If they want to move forward with this, I don't think they had a motion in second in open session.
Okay. They may want to table it.
Yeah, well, either way, they need a.
Talking about the same thing, doing your new business and the other stuff and put me at the end.
Right, we just need to do this, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you want me to go through this first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't think you're going to take any options, so you could just adjourn down to the executive session.
Right, so I'm going to ask if anybody wants to make a motion on this at the time or if we're going to table it, I guess. Okay.